Roll call, please.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Zwort.
Here.
Alderman Stray.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear public comment on the proposed 2018 city budget. Laurie, you gonna give a presentation on that?
We have a public hearing and a budget and study of the tax, but later in the council meeting. The purpose of the city budget is to determine the services that the city will provide throughout the year 2018, the level of that service and the cost and how we're going to fund it. This budget sets the property tax levy needed to fund the services that are identified. Budget process starts early in the year. Departments start submitting their budgets in May and June of the year. Through all the different reviews and meetings, we get to this point tonight where we have the public hearing and budget adoption. You can see all the dates and the times where we have talked about the budget and reviewed and had meetings regarding the budget. There's a lot of budget factors that we have to take into consideration when we put the budget together, and the biggest is our levy limit restrictions. The state restricts our levy to 0 percent or our percentage of growth or net new construction. State law also allows some adjustments for debt issuances, annexations, TIF closures, and use of prior unused levy. Another budget factor is that net new construction. That's what helps us figure out what our levy limit is. For 2017, our net new construction is 1.89 percent. That's a $37.9 million increase in our equalized value over the city. When we look at our equalized value, you can see that back in 2008, we peaked and following economic conditions, the equalized value in the city decreased some over the next several years and began to rise again in 2014. You can see in 2017, we are back to that 2008 level and headed in the right direction. Our equalized value property mix shows that we are 70 percent residential and about 24 percent commercial. Other budget factors that we have to take into consideration are changes to our normal operating costs. For 2018, we're looking at a health insurance increase of about 3 percent, a cost of living adjustment of 2 percent, an increase in some election costs because we're going to have a couple of elections next year, a slight increase in our WRS rates for the protective category with the other categories remaining the same or a slight decrease. We have a decrease to our workers' compensation costs for 2018 due to the fire department moving away and out of the city and also just because of our safety numbers that we have right now and our low workers' compensation costs that we have right now. We're going to see an increase in some technology and fleet costs, again due to the change with Western Lakes Fire District. This is just one less department, or actually two less departments that we can spread these costs over. We have a decrease in charges for electric street lighting and fuel in 2018. Some changes to our revenues include some decreases in state transportation aids. We're also looking at a decrease in our cable franchise fees and our utility tax equivalent. We have a decrease in dispatch revenue of $20,000 due to Western Lakes Fire District moving to Waukesha County. We have an increase in some of our pilot payments, an increase in our community center rentals, and finally, an increase in our interest revenues as the interest rates start to climb. Major initiatives for 2018 are really infrastructure. We're looking at enhanced street program for 2018 and into the future where we will take on more streets than we have in the past, trying to improve our Pacer ratings and keeping our overall costs down for the future. We're looking at some park development. The council's looking at doing strategic planning early next year to look at the future and plan for that proactively. We also have some public safety costs in here as we look forward to working out the details of possibly putting out a new police fire station in the near future. This budget does include $1.95 million in capital spending. We present to you a balanced budget for 2018 and a budget that covers the services that the citizens expect. We're not looking at any decrease in services for 2018. When we take a look at the bottom line, we are looking at a levy increase for the city, tax rate of 2.98 percent. That translates to a mill rate increase of six cents. So, last year, your mill rate for the city was $5.44 per thousand. We're looking at $5.50 per thousand for 2018. This calculates to a total tax change of $13.26 on the average $221,000 home in Oconomowoc. We will be looking later in this meeting for the city council to approve a 2017 tax levy of $10,818,273. That's what I have.
Thank you. Do we have any comments, any comments at all, on the proposed city budget? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we will start with regular business. First item is approval of meeting minutes from October 3rd of 2017. Need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. Next item is comments and suggestions from citizens. Anybody that has any item they'd like to speak on, there are blue cards by the podium. Please come up, fill them out, and give us your name and address, and you can speak on any item. So if anybody would like to come up and speak? You can fill it all later. We all know who you are, Maury.
All right. Don't hold that against me.
Who are you, please?
Anyway, good evening. I just wanted to speak about the topic of the Dietzembach trip. And 2008, I think, is when a delegation from the city, which was comprised of Mayor Maury Sullivan, Pat Nudecker, and myself went over and met our sister-city group of people for the very first time. I think we kind of envisioned a different place for our sister-city in the very beginning, but it was appropriately placed geographically 20 minutes out of a train ride, 20 minutes out of Frankfurt. They had some feelings of the small community, although it was in the midst of a growth spurt at the time. And they were very proud of their sewer system, they were very proud of their city, and as we got touring around and getting the idea of what sister-cities meant to each other, we certainly learned a lot from the group and a lot about their politics, about the immigration situation, about lots of different things. And we learned, surprisingly, which was a surprise to Pat and I, when Maury said, "Well, go around the corner." The place that we stayed at would remind you much of Olympia. And it was probably at the edge of their city at one time, but now it was surrounded by industrial buildings. And Maury said, "Go around the corner, you're going to see what Oconomowoc's going to have." Well, it was an Aldi. We didn't know what an Aldi was. We roamed around in there, and I'm still roaming around the one we have. But for any case, the point is that it was a good experience that we brought back to Oconomowoc. Pat, maybe later on, we'll talk about the education piece, which was, we're so proud of the success of the students that come here and our students that go over there. They taught us how to build, they gave us the building plans for the KES, for the Christmas markets. We were there in December, and we went to a number of different markets. And she and I looked at each other when we got home and said, "You know what? Oconomowoc needs this Christmas market business." And I think, now, who hasn't been at the Christmas market? You gotta go this year. It's Thursday is Thanksgiving, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Oconomowoc fills up and the spirit is flying of glumiklakakt and, no, I don't say that right. But there's people that come, and they're coming from all over, and they talk about it all the rest of the year. And I think if you talk to any of the businesses in Oconomowoc, you will find that certainly their revenue increases those three days after Thanksgiving because people used to just sit around and maybe go for a little walk, but now they can come down, walk around, follow the lake, go to the Christmas market. It's just exciting and it's fun. And I think that the amount of revenue that it's brought to our community, as well as the goodwill and just putting a spotlight on Oconomowoc, is well worth a plane ticket to go and be part of the sister-city environment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Don't forget.
Seeing none, we'll move on to regular business. First item on the agenda tonight is consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have three items: licenses is the first item, second is financial security release for Lexington Square Apartments, and the third item is the budget amendment for grants and donations received July 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2017. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moving second, and any questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Finance, first item is consider act on a resolution awarding contract for financial auditing services for 2017 to 2019. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Laurie?
The city's audit contract expires at the end of this year, so finance staff sent out RFPs for audit services for the three-year period covering 2017 through 2019. We received six proposals, and they were ranked using the city's two-step qualification and cost process. The recommendation from the scoring committee is that Baker, Tilly, Virchow, Kraus be awarded the contract for 2017 through 2019. Questions?
Any questions or concerns?
Have we used Baker-Tilly before?
Not as our auditors. I believe we've used the firm for some work in the city before, but not as our auditors.
Do they have a focused municipal practice, there, I take it?
Yes, they absolutely do.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor, call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to old business, consider act on a resolution approving fund balance contribution from the city of Oconomowoc to Western Lakes Fire Department. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
This is a resolution that you saw at the last council meeting. It's been revised to take out three installments and change this to an initial payment of $34,000, with any other payments needing additional resolutions and coming to council at that time.
Okay, so this is just a cleanup resolution from the one we talked about the previous meeting. Any questions or comments?
So if I understand you correctly, it's just the one payment, and then we come back, and then we...
We'll come back and talk about the other two, or the other one, depending on what it is, the balance due.
Okay.
Okay. Questions?
Say something for the record. This is a tough vote. I think I'm going to vote in favor of it because we amended it like I wanted to, to make later payments contingent, but this is something that really wasn't brought out significantly during the discussions. And I wish it would have been, it would have been something I think would have been cleared up during our discussion to create the Western Lakes Fire District. So I probably will vote for it, though, because I think ultimately we need to move forward, for better or worse, at this point.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor, call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Item is consider act on a reciprocal easement agreement between the city of Oconomowoc and the Park on Lackla Belle LLC. We need a motion to approve the reciprocal agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Attorney Riffel?
You wanted to see this thing, and it's here, but it is not the final version, which I sent on October 18. If you have your form in front of you, there are only two additions to this thing. Well, first of all, the blanks are filled in up on top with regard to who the owner is. The other provision relates to where you would see on the page three, there is an additional provision that says, in essence, if either side, either party tears up your property, restore it to what it was before. And then, third, we had a concern that related to the fact that there will be individual condominium owners here, and so in 4.3 of this agreement, I put in a provision that said that it's the owner who is responsible to consent to any revisions. Otherwise, it must be a condominium association, not the individual owners, because you cannot ever get an amendment to this thing if you require all the individual owners and all of the mortgage ease of the individual owners to agree. So those are the two provisions. I am sorry, I know that this was something that you wanted to see, but this is the agreement with those two revisions.
We have a motion, the second, and we have any questions?
Stan, did you purposely do that, to see if we'd still vote for it?
No, but I beg you to do it, please.
So let me get, section 4.3, you're going to change, or there's going to be owner/H.O.A.
Section 4.3, well, first of all, let me go to the first one. The third provision under 2.3(c) now says, "Any damage to the other owner's parcel due to any activity of the owner shall be promptly restored to the pre-damaged condition."
Gotcha.
And then, the other provision that we're talking about in 4.3 now says, "Consent by the parcel-one owner may be delegated to a condominium association upon written approval of the parcel-two owner and inclusion within recorded condominium restrictions." So that, you know, you don't have to deal with individual owners to amend this thing.
Thank you.
Good now?
I'm okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
So this is not the final version.
What he just said is the final version. What you see is, it's just got those two amendments in it.
Okay, so what am I voting on? I'm not voting on this, because as far as I'm concerned, this is a no.
Can I write it on there?
If he writes it on, it's just what he said.
I'd be glad to write it on it.
Email it.
Give me about 10 minutes.
You can email it to us.
Well, I tell you what, it's easier. Here.
This is from October 18. Send an email to all the Alderman with the proper...
So do we need to change the motion, then, to as amended?
As amended.
As amended, right.
So we need a, who made the motion?
Kevin made the motion.
So Kevin would have to change his motion to say as amended.
I want to change my motion to as amended.
Okay.
With his signature.
Yes, that's correct.
Moved and seconded as amended.
Second amendment, okay.
Any discussions still?
Just as a quick point of discussion based on the last meeting, there was nothing in front of us to consider. We have the basic agreement in front of us. I think the concern we had last time was as a point of policy, not a point of the project, to have the documents in front of us that we're voting on. I feel comfortable with what we have in front of us and the amended motion to move forward. So it was kind of a big discussion point last time. I just want to make sure that we all understand.
And it was, this is appropriate way to do it.
Yeah.
Realistically, it isn't, because this isn't the final version. I understand we're going to vote on the amended, but this is kind of like going into the back room, throwing a couple of sentences together and saying, "Okay, here, guys, vote on this."
Well, this was a clerical mistake, because we had the proper one done. They just attached the wrong one to your packet, and so it was a clerical mistake. But we're not going to throw anybody under the bus for a mistake.
No, no, that's not the point, but it's just, okay.
It was a mistake, honest mistake. Anything else? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, on to new business, consider act on proposed 2018 budget. Laurie, again?
It's my show tonight, yes. All right, so I already went through the budget review with you. I'll put the bottom line up here. What we are asking for from the council and the mayor tonight is to set the city tax levy at $10,818,273. Is there other questions that you have?
The first item on the agenda is to approve the proposed budget. The next item is to set the levy.
Okay, I went backwards.
So this one, we would be a motion to approve the proposed budget, and the next one, you'll set the levy at the $10 million figure.
Okay, sorry, I went backwards. Yep, so approve the proposed budget. We've gone through the review, we've gone through the meetings. If there's any other questions, I'll take those.
We need a motion first to approve the proposed 2018 budget.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions for our finance director? And I'd like to bring one thing up. We did discuss this several times. We had several meetings. We did have amendments and some changes to it. We added some things to the library, we took some things away from the library. There was a couple other from the administrators' fund. So there was some modifications to the original budget, and this is what was approved, or discussed, I should say, in our final committee meeting. Okay, so any other questions? We have a motion, the second, on the floor, to approve the budget. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Let's approve. Next item, set property tax levy for 2017.
As I said, we're asking that the council and the mayor set the tax levy at $10,818,273. The levy will be spread throughout the city based on equalized value, assessed value.
Thank you. So we need a motion to set the tax levy at $10,818,273.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion, the second, on the floor, call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, next item is consider act and resolution authorizing community development authority to initiate requests for qualifications and interest proposals for the Summit Avenue corridor. Bob?
As is customary with anything the CDA does, we need authorization by the city council to do so. Based on our conversations previously with the committee of the whole and the council about roles the CDA can play, one of those areas was the Summit Avenue area, where we have a tremendous amount of underutilized property, as well as a tremendous amount of changes going on there with Peggy Coff funeral home moving, the potential of if and when a Kymark may no longer exist, and the potential sale of Olympia Resort. We also have properties there of the old Highlander Golf Course and Ski Hill that is currently not being used and owned by one party. So the CDA, over the last two meetings, has prepared a draft document, one to start conversations with the property owners, but also to start to take a look at a visionary opportunity to both work in a public-private partnership between the city, as well as those four property owners, to establish a vision of something that's economically feasible for development in that area. Right now, we've had initial conversations with those property owners as directed by the committee of the whole and the CDA. At this point, we have dates in there in that draft, just as, to be able to have a complete document. Not to say that's the timeframe we'll release it. I think we need to have additional conversations to bring those property owners onboard in that partnership, but the general framework of the document, as you can see, binds the city in no way, obligates the city to proceed in no fashion, as well as, really, it's our intent to bring forward a unified front between the private entities and the public entity to determine what's the best interest of that area.
Okay, thank you, Bob. So that's the proposal, what we want to do. So we will need a motion to consider act on a resolution authorizing the CDA to initiate requests for qualifications and interest proposals for the Summit Avenue corridor, as Bob explained them.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, any questions for Bob, or me, or anybody else? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. How do we, as these four parcels are owned by private landowners, how do we, we're just asking for a random group to come out and say, "Here's what I think should happen out here"? Are they required to work with these landowners? It just seems like an odd process to me.
They will. There are larger communities that have done this process. That's where we're bringing it from. La Crosse has done it, Oak Creek has done it. It is a unique process. It hasn't been done a lot.
Have we done it in the city before?
We have not.
Okay.
And we dictated a lot in the downtown plan, what we wanted as a vision of the city.
Right.
Property owners came along with it. This is a little bit different, where we're trying to get the property owners engaged to recognize that if they all work together, the values of their properties may go up, if the city's in partnership with them and the development opportunity is available to them.
Right, yeah, those concepts make sense to me. On the last page of the document, not attachment A, but the last page, you've got this bullet points of things that may lead after we have these requests for qualifications and interests come in. These things are not going to be done without council approval.
That is correct.
Okay. I just, I want to be very clear before we approve this document.
The paragraph below it, Alderman Rosick says, "Following review and responses to the request, the city will seek direction from the city council."
Well, and that was, obviously, I saw that sentence. Seek direction means coming back before the council and getting a vote, or just kind of, just kind of seeking, well, we saw...
And if the CDA does need correction from the city council, that's why this is...
What do you take that sentence to mean? That you're going to, we're going to come back and vote on something before we ask for, to expend money or anything else?
The time we spend money, according to the CDA bylaws, we need to come back to the council.
What this does is, this request for interest goes out, and whoever responds, the CDA will sit together and go through these responses and see what we have, and then present that to council. So...
Right.
It takes the work off of the council, puts it onto that group.
No, I think conceptually, it's fine. I just, I wanted to be very clear about that on the record here today, recorded, you know, what's going to happen. The last question I had was just, who we, where are we publishing this? Are we sending this out to specific development groups, or like known members of the community that do this work, or how are we doing this?
We'll put it on the website, we'll advertise it. Normally, we do things like this, either in the Business Journal and the municipality. There are firms that do this, so we'll send it out to them specifically. There's two or three that we're aware of that do this type of work.
This is a rather large parcel, group of, I mean, group, large number of parcels and number of acres, so this will not be a, this will be an established firm that's done this before, the ones that we choose. Charlie, you got a question?
The property owner is part of creating this document?
Not initially. That's really our next step, I believe, is once we get authorization from you to proceed, I believe that's our next step, is to share it with them. I thought it was probably appropriate to share it with you first, before we shared it with them as property.
Potentially, one or more of the property owners can say, "I want nothing to do with it."
Correct.
Very possible.
And we've had that in the past.
This dies right here.
At least a public attempt of trying to see something happen there in an area that hasn't in a long time. In the next two to three years, we could see a tremendous amount of change there, not for the better, not for the best interest of the image of this community.
Lou?
So I think in the past, the city has attempted to, I want to impose a vision upon that area for potential development, which hasn't been received well by the owners, which resulted in non-movement and money expended by the city to create that, that approach. So looking, looking forward and not trying to repeat some of the, the processes that haven't been successful is, is what kind of led to this approach. I believe that engaging the CDA and allowing the CDA to go out and create a vision with stakeholders, which are going to be the property holders, is, is gonna lead us down hopefully to a different road. And the way, on the back, you can, you can see it identifies each property holder individually, and the visioning ideally will be in whole, but have the flexibility to exclude certain plots, so no one property holder can, can hold hostage the entire development.
Do you have a question, Joe?
I did. Bob, I noticed in the documentation that you had provided, it did show the approximate current zoning. Is it our intent that when this actually comes back, that they would be looking at that whole area and making recommendations on possible changes to the zoning out there?
That'd be correct. I mean, the largest portion of this area, a lot of it is zoned, 150 acres is zoned urban reserve, which was a golf course. It'll likely not become a golf course in the future if it wasn't financially viable. They'll look at what is financially viable and likely look at that, as well as the whole 300 acres, and say what makes sense in this whole area, whether that's single-family, multifamily, commercial-type uses.
And I know it's way too early to even talk about any kind of roads, but I know that with the zoning that's on some of those properties now, with being multifamily and higher density, that they kind of had an idea for that. So it would be my hope then that we would take a look at those multifamily areas too, because there's an awful lot of that area zoned for that, that I think we're hearing from citizens. We may need to back off of that a little.
Charlie?
So at this point, cost to the city is really basically just been staff time and whatever we're going to spend in advertising.
That is correct.
Okay.
This looks pretty good, Bob, but I wish the CDA awful good luck working with these three that you're gonna be working here with, but good luck, man.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Your next item is consider act on Sears Holding Corporation/Unisource Centers LLC settlement agreement with the City of Oconomok for excessive assessment claims. We need a motion to approve the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Who gets this? Laurie?
At the last council meeting, Attorney Ryan Braithwaite was here to introduce this settlement agreement to you. This is between Sears Unisource Center and the City of Oconomok for, the claim is for excessive assessment. There has been ongoing negotiations between the Unisource Centers and the city's attorney. The result of those negotiations is a settlement proposal. That's before you today. If you look at it, it provides for a refund of taxes for years 2013 through 2016, and also stipulates that the assessed value of the property will be no more than $5.4 million for 2017 and '18. I think that's the same amount, both. I have to look.
Eighteen is fifty-two fifty.
Five point, yeah, five point four for seventeen and five million two hundred and fifty thousand for two thousand eighteen. I prepared a memo for you, and in the memo, you can see what the city portion of that refund would be. So we look at it, the total refund is $103,354.95. The city portion of that refund is $33,570.24. I can tell you that there will also be a refund for 2017 as the assessed values are already out there, and we're not able to change that on the tax roll at this late date. So there will be a refund for 2017 as well. At this time, I don't have that calculated. We just set the tax levy tonight, but I, I'll be able to let you know. But what'll happen is I'll bring it back to you for authorization for that refund, so then you'll know what the exact amount is.
Okay. Kevin?
My question was answered.
Answered, okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor, to approve this settlement agreement. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, next item is consider act on quitclaim deed between City of Oconomok and the Park on Lake Lebel. We need a motion to approve the quitclaim deed.
Make a motion to approve the quitclaim deed, second.
Stan?
This is one of those oddities that come up. Basically, you've already approved the certified survey map that sets the boundaries for the park development. In the process of getting the title commitment, the title company has some question as to whether or not the city has any right title or interest to some tiny sliver of land that's in the boundaries of the property that you've already said that they will own and they will be able to develop on. In reality, staff and I believe if there's any discrepancy in terms of the lot lines, it's not on the west side, it's on the east side. And that's been pointed out to the title company. And it really boils down to a discrepancy between the way that the county GIS has it mapped out and the way that the surveyor, who by the way, did our property, their property, and Newman's property, has laid it out. So your surveyor that, you know, did our CSM, did their CSM, did the Newman's CSM, said there's no discrepancy. But because it's laid out on the GIS a little bit for the county differently, the title company is asking that you quitclaim any right title or interest that you might have in the lands that you've already said they own. So it's kind of a ridiculous thing, but they need it or they can't close, or they can't get perfect, you know, get the full title commitment. So, you know, it's just one of those things. So you're not giving anything up because you've already given them everything that they are asking for.
Thanks, Dan.
Questions?
It talks about in here that there's a survey map. There's no number on here on this document. Is that, should that be included, or is that not part of this?
That's the CSM that you guys already approved.
No, no, we're quitclaiming, yeah.
It's our CSM that has not been recorded yet.
Yeah, it's a chicken and egg thing.
It's what you guys have approved, but we haven't recorded it yet because we need the title company to make sure that they'll give the bank and.
So you have to quitclaim it without the numbers on it? Is it?
The CSM will be recorded before the quitclaim. They'll be essentially simultaneous.
Okay, so you're gonna just fill this in after it gets recorded?
Right, right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm really confused.
Okay.
So essentially, what happens is if you look at the CSM for the city center, the CSM for the park property, and the CSM for the Newman property, they all fit in a nice puzzle. There's no gaps. They're all good together. They're all performed by the same surveyor. When the title company looked at this to give the title insurance, the title company said, well, based on GIS and based on former landmarks, we think there might be a gap here. They looked at the gap. The title company thinks the gap might be on our property, but in between our property and the city property. When I discussed this with Mr. Frye and Attorney Riffle, they said the GIS, it might be between our property and the Newman property. In any event, once all three CSMs are recorded, they all fit nice and neat, like a nice puzzle. There's no gaps for anybody. But in order for the title company to ensure title to that CSM, they need to make sure that the city or somebody who owned that city center property before the city doesn't come down the road and claim any interest to what they think may have been a gap. So essentially, you guys are being asked to sign a quitclaim deed, saying that you have no interest in our CSM. It, it, it's really goofy, as Attorney Riffle said, and it'd be like asking us to quitclaim deed to you any interest we may have in the city's parcel. We know we don't have any, so we know the deed essentially means nothing, but it's a title company requirement that we need in order to get this title insurance and commitment. I hope I explained it to you still a confused at me.
I guess my, my only concern is we will be approving something without seeing numbers. Is that necessary?
No, there are, there are numbers. There's the, you have the CSM that you've approved, and you're quitclaiming deed in any interest you have in that CSM. That CSM gives a full legal description, so that CSM is not recorded, and those numbers come as you record. And so when you record, you then handwrite the number at the actual register of deeds office of what that CSM is. But you have the full legal description, which is the approved CSM, that, in front of you. So you do have all the numbers.
They just haven't recorded the CSM yet.
They just have to record it. When, when you talk about gaps, are you talking inches?
I heard it could be as much as five feet.
Right, okay.
Stan, you know, the assessor did that property about three times already.
You, you mean our surveyor?
Surveyor, yeah.
Yeah, right.
He's done it about three times already.
And he's retired.
He ought to be retired.
There might be a reason for that, right?
Yeah. He made, he made a lot of money off just, you know, just changing the dates on them. Just kidding. But, you know, the original one, that, you know, the property that we had, they had to move the whole line because the middle of the building, that Spinnaker's building, wasn't originally on the right plat. So he had to go down and move everything. That's probably where the five feet came in, or five inches, or somewhere along the line.
And it's because of the way the GIS markings had it with the county.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was a, he earned his money on that deal, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a bad deal. But the fact of the matter is, your properties are already, your line's been established. You've already approved their property line. So you're giving up, I mean, this is absolutely nothing.
Yeah.
It's nothing.
It, it's like me quitclaiming any interest I have in your home.
Or the city hall.
I have no interest in it, so it means nothing.
You can have it.
But a title insurance needs it.
He has no interest in this home either.
Oh, I don't know. Hospitals, yes, but.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second, to enforce or act on a quitclaim deed. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, under staff reports tonight, we have a couple of different reports. The first one is the city housing mix report from our city planner. This is, there've been questions asked about the, the ratio of single to multifamily homes. Jason's gonna give us a update and tell us what the ratio is, where it started, I think it was 2014, and where we're at today.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As Mayor said, I'm giving an update on the housing mix. I was asked to provide this, and the answer's no, those houses are not in the city. I didn't want to single anyone out.
I'm a sucker for pillars. I was all over that.
No, those are not in the city. I didn't want to single anyone out. Now, there's gonna be a lot of information in this, a lot of numbers, so I'm, I'm gonna try to go slow. Our current population, I, I looked in my crystal ball, as of January 1st of 2018, is gonna be 16,842. This was certified by the, the state of Wisconsin, so that gives you an idea on how many people are in the city. Right now, we have existing and approved platted lots of dwelling units. We have 8,787, and that's as of October. Some of these are not built, like, like Silver Lake Trails is a good example, subdivision at the old Storms Gulf Range. I included that because they're, they're platted, and they're out there, and they're asking for building permits right now, but they're not built. So that, these include units that have been approved by the city. Of that ratio, and this is the summary, 64% is a single-family, and 36% is either a duplex or multifamily. Now, I differentiated those into those two categories because that is how census data puts category, categorizes the, single families is one, and then duplex and multifamily in the other. So if you're looking at history of the city, that's really the best data available. Okay? So where did this 60-40 split come from? We've all heard about that. Well, some time ago, in 2010, not all of you were here, the common council adopted the comprehensive land use plan that goes out to the year 2030, and I'm gonna be asking to be amending that in the near future. But we had a housing goal. It was number three. It was on page 114. And it says we're supposed to provide a variety of housing types, designs, densities, price ranges, to meet the needs of all the residents of varying incomes, ages, and lifestyle preferences. Then under that goal, there was a whole bunch of objectives, at least 11, because number 11 says, continue to work towards a city having a housing stock ratio of 60% single-family and 40% multifamily, and that includes duplexes, right? In the code, it says including duplexes. So that's the 60-40 history of where that came from. When Christie Weber was hired, one of her first duties assigned to her was to do a housing study. The census data was just coming out for the 2010 data, and in the fall of 2013, she completed a housing study, planning internally in the planning department, a housing study. Not all of you have, have seen it. I have a copy of it. It's actually dated January 1st of 2014. We shared it with all the council members at that time to, to show you that we keep our pulse on, on housing numbers in the city. At that time, it was about 68% single-family and 32 multifamily. And again, all the numbers are in the study. It reported not only things that were existing, but then we also included things that were already approved but maybe not built. So we're at 68-32. Where does that compare? And in the housing study, we looked at other comparable communities, and I just kind of threw this in there. You know, Waukesha County communities are up near the top. You know, where were we at in, based on the 2010 numbers? We're pretty much right in the middle. In the county, you'd, and I didn't cherry pick any, I just kind of took some of them that were from the study. I think Waukesha was even lower, but 55% single-family, up to 81%. If you take right in the middle of that, that's where we were. Waukesha County as a whole was 71-29, but City of Oconomok, 67-33. Outside of the other comparables that sometimes we use, like Watertown, Fort Atkinson, we're Outside of the other comparables that sometimes we use, like Watertown, Fort Atkinson, we're pretty similar to, to them as well. Okay, so then that study again was 2014. We've had some development, quite a bit since 2014, since that study was done, that were not included in that study. So if you start looking at this, this was very interesting, I thought. If you look at all the single family that's been approved, and a lot of this hasn't been built yet, and all the multifamily that's been approved, and some of that's not been built, it's almost dead even, four eighty-three to four eighty-four. Amazing, I thought. That was just incredible. Um, and this includes the, the latest three condo projects we had and some subdivisions that are under construction right now. Prairie Creek Ridge addition number two is on there. Um, the preliminary plat was approved, so it's on there. Final plat's going to Plan Commission tomorrow night. So you might ask, well, how many of these are actually condos? Because condos are a little bit different. It's like more of a homeownership. It's got its own tax key number. Well, I highlighted in red, um, how many condos are there compared to apartments in the multifamily? Well, that's about almost a fifty-fifty split, if you wanna just ballpark it. So lately, the trend has been condominiums. I think, you know, in the two thousand and eight, people weren't building condos at all. It was shunned upon, but, but condos are making a big comeback. So you can kind of see lately, we've been um, doing more, uh, more condos. The apartment outlier, there's the Retreat at Prairie Creek. That was a hundred and forty-eight units, so that was a lot of the apartments. The Village Crossings duplex, some of you may wonder, why, why is that on the list? It was actually restructured in 2016, so we took it off the old list and then we had to add it back in. And the numbers changed a little bit. They have some single family condos as well. They had thirty-nine. So if you look under 2016, under single family, you see Village Crossing. So that's why that's, that's in there. So with that number, four eighty-three and four eighty-four, the number of single family units versus multifamily is growing at the same rate, okay? They're both going up equally. But then if you start looking at the percentages of the units, um, I'm gonna flip to the next slide quick and not change much. This, this amount of single family percentage is going down. Remember earlier on, I said in 2013, it was at sixty-eight, thirty-two? Well, now it's at sixty-four, thirty-six. So it's really, the amount of single family is dropping. Now, our, our targeted goal is that sixty-forty split. We're actually getting closer to it, but I, I wanted to share with you. So when you map the percentages, it looks like this. So they're not equal anymore. They're not both going up the same way. One is going down, being um, the single family and the, and the multifamily. So if you put our, our number on there, our goal of sixty-forty, you can see the gap is kind of getting closer to our goal. If, if that is truly the city's goal is sixty-forty, we're getting there. If we keep going at the same pace, you know, we might dip below the sixty, or we might go above the, the forty. So what does this really mean? If you take the number of, of dwelling units in the city right now, eighty-seven, eighty-seven, and you, you take, what's sixty percent of that? Well, that would be fifty-two hundred and seventy-two. Single family is our targeted number. So um, if you take our existing and then you subtract the target number, you, you could kind of say we have a surplus of single family right now of three hundred and thirty-one, or a deficit of, of the same number of multifamily. It's kind of rudimentary, you know, algebra here, but it's just simple, um, you know, we're, that's the gap right now. To get to that perfect sixty-forty split, it's looking at about three hundred and thirty-one units. So if a development comes in that was not included in my earlier reports, we'll have to kind of watch that, okay? So in the future, what, what can we do? Well, um, city staff will monitor developments of how um, it affects the proposed housing mix, affects these percentages. You know, we meet with, with prospective developers before they submit applications. So we can kind of talk to them ahead of the curve and, and make sure they're aware of it. And then we can also do something else. Um, we can add updates in our, for each housing development, our staff reports of how this affects the overall ratios, percentages. And if you've looked at the Plan Commission packet for tomorrow night, I've already got a housing paragraph in there and of how that one was. Now, that one was already added in, so it really didn't change anything, but that would be a sample of what we can do just to keep the common council informed on, are we over that threshold? We have some base data. I think the data is sound. I'm, I'm very comfortable and confident with the data. And we can just continue as developments go. We just plug them on that list and, and keep letting you guys know the information. So if there's any other questions, I can uh, answer them.
One of the things I wanted to bring up, and we talked about this when I first saw this report, is you have apartment complexes out on our side of town, which is one single tax key. And then we have three, three developments going up with half million to million dollar condominiums. Do you consider them the same? And that's where this came up with, um, with what's going on at the park and at Eagles Landing, those being high-end condominiums. You, would you consider those the same as a single, or as a multifamily? And I don't know how that works, how we count those type of units. Do we count it as a tax key, or, or what do we do? The condominiums out by Paff Farms, each one of those is an individual tax key. And they're quite expensive.
Yeah.
So to me, that's not multifamily. That's a single family house. So I guess that question there is that sixty-forty splitter, we're at sixty-four, thirty-six. What is it really, and what do we wanna see? So I'll open it up for questions now. Charlie?
Well, what I keep hearing from homeowners is that there's getting to be too many condos, too many apartments. So maybe the sixty-forty split isn't the number we wanna have. That may mi- may not be the ideal one. But the only way to change that is to change it through the comprehensive land use plan, correct? We'd have to, we'd have to go back, review that, make amendments to that.
That's correct. That's the direction that staff has.
Right.
And that uh, the public can read the plan. It's available on our website. And, and that's what is out there right now for the city's position.
That's what I'm hearing from homeowners, is that the number of condos and apartments has gotten to be too many.
Even, even a duplex condo? Like at Paff Farms, the Glen out on uh, Lisbon Road? Side-by-side condominiums?
But I hear a lot from just plain old, the homeowners is, there's just been too much growth.
Yeah, okay.
Now, when we look at how that affects our tax levy, we certainly...
Well, that's the thing, you know.
...kind of growth. I get that. We need the, the growth in order to have any chance to keep the levy.
And that's where it's coming from mainly. Matt?
Yeah, I, I, I kind of agree with your comments too, Mayor. Um, I mean, some of these condos at Eagles Landing are gonna be wildly expensive. I mean, these are more expensive than probably most of the single family houses in the city. So counting them in with the multifamily is kind of almost a, a, a bit disingenuous. And I'm not saying that, I mean, that's just the way we count them, the census counts them and everything. We're not doing anything different. But, but kind of throwing those in with apartments that rent for seven hundred bucks a month are totally different.
Yeah.
And that doesn't mean we're, we're supplying affordable housing for folks either. I mean, condos is not affordable housing on the lake, with a boat slip and a million dollar price tag. You know, but yet it's dropped into that number. So I think there are some people that are saying, look, there's too much stuff going on, but the crossings by me, I mean, those look like houses. I mean, those are really, and they're, they're starting out, I mean, with nothing in them, it's like three hundred grand, you know? And then you start putting in granite countertops and all the, the, you know, bells and whistles, four hundred. So is that the same as, you know, a small house somewhere? I don't know. It's a tou- I, I think, I think probably the percentages we're at now are probably okay.
I think what you look at is you look at people see, the apartments up at Piglet Wiggly, and they see a large number of apartments.
Right.
And then you see the Glen, or you see the Crossings, or you see these large ones coming up. They're, they're two different things, 'cause one is rental and one is...
Ownership.
Ownership. And it's expensive ownership. Jeff?
I don't think the percentages are that far off, but I think one of the things that we're kind of missing the boat on is that we haven't established goals on what type of housing we want. In our community, we, uh, if you talk to the people down at Berkshire, we have just a ton of elderly people in our community that are trying to find lower rent housing for senior citizens, and they can't find it. And we've got a lot of businesses that are coming into the city that are asking for housing for workers, and we're not promoting anything on that. So I don't know, we wanna, we should just al- always concentrate on a sixty-forty split. I think we should look at what the needs of the community are and start to maybe, maybe start to add something into our plan that would add in some types of housing that's gonna fit the needs.
I think this is a really good baseline to start having that conversation though, and keeping it updated um, in the format that you discussed, I think would help not only council, but the community identify really what our global target is and then what direction we're, we're moving toward in order to a, achieve that. That'll allow us to get to that micro segment of workforce development housing, affordable housing that seniors can participate in to stay within the community as well as the condos and, and standard market rate apartments. We can start to, to dissect it a little bit more. There's hard line trends that I, I think this will also help us identify um, changes that we see going on right now with the millennials, for example. You know, it, communities are, are struggling to, some communities are struggling to attract and retain the millennials, I think, uh, to their detriment. That'll impact um, our ability to, to stay a, a growth community that has all the attributes that we, we have come to really enjoy. But this is, this report, I believe, gives us the, the numbers that start to have that conversation. So I really appreciate your, your effort and, and the way you structured this.
So, so what'll happen, as, as time goes on, as new developments are approved, Jason will update the, the report and then you'll see the split. And one thing you said that was interesting about millennials, and from what I've seen with millennials, is what they're looking for is they want the, the nice apartments. They just don't wanna buy a house.
Right.
So they're, they're looking for things like the Gateway and the Worthington because they can afford the payment, but they don't wanna buy a house. Go ahead, Derek.
Okay, um, I think these uh, numbers that you, in the presentation is good. It helps us give realistic um, results back to people that have questioned, that are questioning it. And uh, the perception might not be the reality, because you know, when apartments go up, they're big and everybody sees them, or, or condos, and they make the paper, whereas when houses and subdivisions go in, they're just kind of chipping away at it. So I think it's more of a perception than, and we are on the increase, but not at a rapid pace. It's real gradual and that's good. So thanks for putting it together. It'll help us talk to constituents about their concerns.
Yeah, thanks, Jason, 'cause I, I'm the instigator of this particular work, well done that you did. You, your latest four or five years is absolutely probably correct. When you go back to your census, you're, you're talking about people writing on a piece of paper, there are so many little duplex houses put together that probably would show up and, and make uh, make that line of uh, multifamily houses, you know? And they're, they're all over the place. And probably the only way to find out exactly where they all are is by post office. 'Cause there's just a bunch of them. I run around and go, holy caps, didn't even know that was a duplex. I don't think we do either, but, but thank you for doing this.
Mike?
I was just agreeing with Alderman Zwart. It's the, the condos, the apartments are in prime locations.
Interesting.
And it's just the way they need it to be. That's why it looks so big and so plentiful. But like you said, all the subdivisions are spread out, and that's exactly how the houses are.
Yeah, I mean, this number is, I mean, four eighty-three to four eighty-four over the last four, three, four years.
You'd never think that. You'd think it's easily condos and apartments way over it.
Right, just because they're bigger buildings, but there's a lot of houses, so. Lou?
I do hope that this spurs further discussion in policy, so we can as a body give some direction to what we think the community needs in regards to workforce development and, and that micro stand, um, to make sure that we have enough workers to supply to the businesses that are coming into town as well as retaining our, our senior population and on our growth of that family age. So ho- hopefully this doesn't just stop here. Um, hopefully through planning and the appropriate committees and bodies, you can start to really make some recommendations for what you see we need to do from a master planning standpoint and come back to us with some, some additional information and recommendations.
I did have one other question. I, I see the Shorehaven Apartments. Are those assisted living, or are those just pure apartments?
Um, Shorehaven recently was approved for a variety of, of updates at the property and they built them. They're independent living and they are, people are, are renting those apartments. Um, and then they have some assisted care as well as part of the campus, but no, they do have, um, and they're geared for seniors. I think fifty-five and, and above, um, but you know, those people do have vehicles and they are renting them.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jason. Excellent report. Okay, next report is from uh, Bob Duffy. It's gonna be on the sister city relationship.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did share some information in your packets, like it's set up here, as well as it did share some information about Dietzenbach for those of you have, who haven't been around as long, um, about the sister city relationship. We also have individuals who were involved in the process from the beginning. So I do need to thank Pat Newdecker and Kathy Kempf, who helped put together some of the narrative. Um, just the staff who gets to be able to put this whole thing together. I have not been involved since two thousand, and I'll go through the history, uh, what the purpose of the sister city is, kind of give you a snapshot of some of the experiences. If at the end, um, the mayor wants to share his experience, or if you want to ask anybody else, I'm sure they'd be willing to share their experience of us traveling to Dietzenbach. Um, and then some future opportunities that we, we may wanna pursue related to the benefits that we've learned upon our travel. So the sister city relationship was established to broaden our international connections. And you'll hear this a couple times, 'cause I think we need to remind people, establish closer ties between our people, both Dietzenbach and Oconomowoc, and then fur- further the mutual interests in education, education, culture, tourism, and government. Chronologically, and I'll, I will walk through this, because I think it's somewhat important of how did we get a sister city? Um, in nineteen seventy-six, Governor Lucie established the city-sister-state relationship between Wisconsin and Hessen, Germany. That was because his Secretary of State, Clausur, James Clausur, was from Germany and, and thought that it was important to have those international relationships to be able to, to continue on between Wisconsin and Germany. Two thousand and five, County Executive Dan Finley established a county relationship with Landrat Offenbach, Germany. And that's what really started bringing these into Waukesha County. WCTC had an international relations officer who actually brought individuals throughout the county searching for uh, sister city relationships between Germany and here areas in Waukesha County. Brookfield has a sister city with Salientstadt, Germany. They were the first one in the county. We became the second. When an invitation came from Dietzenbach for the city to explore, uh, City of Oconomowoc to explore that opportunity, a delegation uh, did go there in two thousand and six. I'll share some details about that. Two thousand and seven, representatives from Dietzenbach came here. Our official uh, sister city relationship was established in two thousand and eight, when Mayor Sullivan was there and signed that, those documents. Since then, Dietzenbach delegation has sent various groups here in two thousand and ten, twelve, and sixteen. Um, in two thousand and eleven, Mayor Daley actually proposed a legislative exchange with Dietzenbach. And then again, we returned here in July of twenty seventeen. So just to kind of give you an image, uh, what, what has happened over time, in two thousand and six, uh, this is a picture of the four who traveled, who representative, represented the city, education, and commerce, as well as international relations for Waukesha County and Oconomowoc, uh, visiting with the state of Hessen officials as part of that delegation. As was said earlier, I think in the comments, Oconomowoc and Dietzenbach were identified as potential sister cities given our proximity from Milwaukee and Frankfurt as communities. Dietzenbach is a little larger than us. They're about thirty-four thousand people, where we're, as you've seen, we're just over sixteen. But more so, it was about location of the community. This is also, as was mentioned, the first introduction of that whole Christmas market, which I'll come back to a little bit when we start talking about the value and benefit that we believe we received as a community. So in two thousand and ten, as I said, the gentleman in the center uh, was the mayor, Burgermeister Steven Geisler, who is no longer the mayor. He's actually kind of a quasi council of governments individual with the state of Hessen, uh, but still stays involved. They brought ten delegates here to Oconomowoc. And again, what we try to do is provide them experiences uh, throughout our, our community. Um, as you can see, they're here at the Oconomowoc Museum. You know, they shared information. We, we brought them to the YMCA, Holy Hill, Madison, toured city facilities, Waukesha County facilities, WCTC, and so on. So we try to provide that experience and so do they. Mayor Sullivan obviously was active involved in this process. He held reception at his home when those individuals come. You'll see Dan Verakis in there as well. He's continued to be active in this process. He also joined us in two thousand and eight when we went to sign on as the sister, sister city partnership signing. So the picture on your right is actually the documents, both in German and in English, that hang in the hallway here of City Hall. And Mayor Sullivan, Cornelia Butterwack, who was the chairman of the parliament, they call their council a parliament. So when you heard Marine talk about how government is a little bit different. Their range is a little bit different in their parties and all sorts of things that we could talk about for two, for a long time. Uh, so that happened in two thousand and eight. And again, to really further that interest in education, tourism, economic development, and government. Uh, you, when you go to Germany, you truly understand how they value having people visit their community. Um, again, these are some things, uh, Dietzenbacher is actually their newspaper. That's a signed poster that was given to the city, hangs in the hallway down to the here of City Hall. They actually created out of our city logo, a crest for us, which has actually been constructed into the roundabout in the center of their downtown. So they actually only have four sister cities. I believe they were trying to create a fifth when we were, we were over there. I believe they were trying to create a fifth when we were, we were over there. But they have four sister cities, all of which are displayed as crests within their community quite proudly. The other relationship we'll talk about is the educational side, as it relates to Conawok High School and the Heinrich Mann School. And as you can see, we oftentimes tour the schools and they're always willing and ready to welcome us as visitors. Again, just some other images of in two thousand and eight, when we had a group of ten go there, State of Hessen, Dietzenbach, all of those officials, that's who we normally interact with, interface with, talk about the different issues they're dealing with from a governmental standpoint. You heard a little bit about immigration, housing, some of those elements, transportation, all of those components. Again, the other theme that we continue to bring is this Christmas markets. Christmas markets were the two times that we were there was in December. So again, that is a piece to bring the culture of their community here. Obviously, Wisconsin and this part, settled part of Wisconsin is highly German-based. So bringing those types of things back to the area has been a benefit to us. Twenty-ten, they brought sixteen individuals here to the community. This is actually a picture of them sitting in the village green, watching our homecoming parade. They were actually introduced at the homecoming halftime. But again, we brought them to other areas, Devil's Lake, Old World, Wisconsin. They met actually the stained glass artisan over at Oakbrook-Ester Studios, who was born in Germany and now actually works here in downtown Oconomowoc. So always trying to make those connections between Germany and the artisans and craftsmen here in, you know, in Oconomowoc and this area. Always try to get to Madison, the state capital, so they can understand that state relationship, other components. As I said, we visited the Madison area. They are always gracious and present us with this, with things. This is a plaque actually recognizing our, so many years of our relationship appreciation plaque that they presented to them, Administrator Guard, on behalf of their delegation. Two thousand and twelve was kind of an interesting time for us. As we went those multiple years, in two thousand and eight, we came back and, as was said, bringing something like a Christmas market to the community to spur interest in downtown Oconomowoc, to make that connection as we were rebuilding our downtown, trying to create ways in the cold seasons to bring people downtown, to be able to create an event, was a tremendous benefit to us. Four individuals did travel here to the official opening of our Christmas market. It was a tremendously cold festival, but really the start of a new tradition. If you remember, that was the Thanksgiving, it was seventy-five degrees on Thanksgiving and minus ten when the Christmas market opened, with open-air tents and open-air market. So it was an interesting little experience, even they were cold. So again, we did bring them to the Octagon House and some other things as well. So our first market is a little bit, was a little bit different than what they do. But again, cold in Wisconsin, the music and the entertainment component, as well as the large Oktoberfest tent, has served us well. And we'll talk a little bit about that. Twenty sixteen, they again returned to us. So again, understand, they've come to visit us at least four times. We've been there two, two as a sister city, three if you count the initial delegation that went in two thousand and six. But again, they and their press truly value their sister city relationships. They publish nothing but positive information about the visits, the people that are trying to experience and gather information. This is actually their Burgermeister and his significant other, Sandra, up in the bucket truck of the fire truck, and they had to return that favor when we were there, over there this time. So again, brought them to Milwaukee, brought them to the capital. Some of them, we got them to experience the traditional Wisconsin fish fry. Even got Alderman Stray photo bombing the mayor in one of those photos, because he attended the fish fry at the community center. In two thousand and twelve, they actually got to tour the community center under construction. So when they returned in two thousand and sixteen, we actually had their welcome dinner there. So again, we always try to bring them to facilities, Nature Hill, as well as this year, we, or twenty sixteen, we gave them a tour of the ways for our treatment facility as well. So are we trying to learn from each other about those type, different type of operations, technology, those types of things as well? So in two thousand and seventeen, we did travel there with ten of us, you know, really got to experience the Rhine River. This is actually the Niederwald not monument, the history of Germany. You know, they had primarily emperors who may, who oversaw Germany for a long period of time until statehood came. So this was really the unification monument that was created. Pretty incredible monument at the top of a hill of all the vineyards overlooking the Rhine River. Again, a lot of information gets disseminated through the local papers whenever anybody visits there. Again, this is when we were welcomed by the Burgermeister to their rothaus, their city hall's called a rothaus, by not only the Jürgen Rogg, who's the current mayor or Burgermeister, but also the parliament. So their parliament is about twenty-eight people. It's made up of thirteen different parties. And it's, that whole thing is quite interesting, that we kind of have a total party system here, and they have like a thirteen-party system that represents the people. So always, always tremendously welcomed. Again, Rudersheim is an area on the Rhine River. This was actually a sculpture, and we try to, you know, bring each other to different things. You saw before, we were at a sculpture in the Madison area of a cow. They brought us to a sculpture of the lion. The lion is symbolic of the State of Hessen, who's actually commissioned as the seventieth anniversary of federal statehood. So as I said before, they had empires and rulers, so their statehood is only seventy years old. So really seventy-five, because that's when that was in place. So now really to talk about the benefits, because that's a question that's been asked, we really categorize them into education, tourism, culture, as well as business benefits that we've seen. Oftentimes, it's very hard to quantify those, at least the business piece, but I think we can share what we believe, what we brought here in order to embrace that relationship, but also make that connection between each different groups. So from an education standpoint, there's a strong partnership between Oconomowoc High School and the Heinrich Mann School. They actually do educational exchanges. I believe they used to actually do classes, connected classes via the, via the internet. We've actually had five delegations of students that have exchanged between Dietzenbach and Oconomowoc. So twenty-five Oconomowoc High School students and thirty Dietzenbach students have participated. This exchange is different in the fact that it's not language-based. So they don't need to speak German to do this. It's more of an educational-based, history-based type of a situation. So it really provides young adults the opportunity to travel and broaden their understanding of culture and worldviews. And I think that's pretty important in our day and age, because that sometimes always doesn't come across. The other thing that educationally that's happened, and it kind of transitions into our next benefit, is as was said, the, the actual design drawings, CAD drawings of the Christmas market huts came over from Dietzenbach to Oconomowoc High School. Their trades classes actually built the initial huts for the German market and really made those available to that event. So really into tourism and culture, although we're forty-three hundred miles apart, those involved in past visits thought this idea of bringing a Christmas market here, or a Kriskindl market, to Oconomowoc would be an enhancement, would be enhancement to an event in a down season, as well as bring customers to downtown Oconomowoc. Because remember in two thousand and eight, downtown Oconomowoc was not as lively as it currently is. So this will be the sixth year that we, we have the Christmas market. It continues to grow, and it really has become the event that kicks off the holiday season, not just for Oconomowoc, but for the whole lake country. Everybody looks forward to coming to it. Volunteers, community and corporate sponsors annually assist in making the German market a reality. And really, you know, I believe as a tourism director, this has probably become the second largest event at Oconomowoc. And we're chasing the festival of the arts every time we can. It's a little bit hard to beat a lakefront art festival in the middle of summer. The other interesting relationship we've, we've tried to build with some existing, there's a longstanding German-American partnership program between Oconomowoc High School and Offenbach, Germany, so a different community. You know, the German market has annually donated a hut for them to use. They actually raise money by selling German chocolates and candy and advent calendars in order to fund scholarships for their kids and exchanges back and forth. So the upper, in the upper picture, actually on October seventeenth, the mayor welcomed twenty, twenty-two students here to the city and to City Hall. Those students also actually stay and host families. And then in the following year, I believe it's in March, Oconomowoc High School students will do the same with the German-American partnership. So again, a language-based exchange that we've connected with in the German market to be able to assist them in those travel costs, to be able to make that happen. So twenty seventeen market will begin to take shape this weekend. Friday, the huts will start getting delivered and the village will start getting placed on Saturday. Anybody who wants to volunteer, you're more than welcome. It's a lot of work, it takes, it takes a lot. We hope to see you all at the Thanksgiving weekend for a six-year-long event. Again, another way, it's hard to quantify. We believe as we're getting into the fifth and sixth year, we likely will bring fifteen to twenty thousand people to downtown Oconomowoc during a time in the busiest shopping season that people used to never come downtown. They went to large market retailers, those types of things. We also recognize that they don't just come to visit the market, they patronize our other, our businesses as well, which I think is the offshoot benefit that we've realized to be able, through this relationship and building this event. So we have, Kathy Kempf was able to ask some of the businesses downtown, here are some of their comments on the impact that they've seen related to that event brought back from our sister city and the success that that event has had on downtown Oconomowoc. So all the way from, we've seen a fifty percent increase in traffic on Friday and Saturday, and that's for a business that's not even open on Sunday, to they try to count their traffic on Thanksgiving week but stop because it keeps coming, to it's easy to double, it's easily doubled our business for that weekend year over year. They have constant foot traffic, doubled our sales since it started. And again, this one's interesting as well. They do business, Old Town Comfort Shoes does business throughout the state, Mail Lord, or those types of things, but has recognized that the German market brings awareness to shoppers that the local businesses are. We're very unique. Not many people have a shoe store in their downtown, even our own residents. So there, by bringing in new people here, people are recognizing that they exist in our downtown as well. So as we look to the future, there are other opportunities that we can explore, have that conversation with you all. As I said, Mayor Daley tried to explore a legislative exchange. That was a time when Mayor Geisler was leaving and Mayor Rogg came in, so it may that got lost in some of that transition. So it's something we can continue to explore. Coordination of group tours for residents, governmental exchanges involving both bodies to be able to exchange as well as residents. Again, when we were there this summer, obviously the other thing that we saw was the Summer Wine and Food Festival. We have events in summer, but we've lost events in summer since our downtown has happened. We used to have a taste of Oconomowoc and all sorts of things. Is that opportunity to try to bring some of those things back here to our community? So that's a conversation that we likely could have, and there's groups of people who are willing to help. So I hope this has given you all the history of our sister city, sister city, as well as the positive impact it has had on the Oconomowoc community. Twenty eighteen will mark the tenth anniversary of our sister city partnership. And we really think an invitation back to those in Dietzenbach, welcoming them and inviting them here to Oconomowoc to celebrate that anniversary would be a great gesture as part of that relationship. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor, who can share his experiences.
Thank you, Bob. Again, this was put together, there was a request as to, you know, kind of a report of what we did. And I think it was more important to have the history of where this started, because a lot of people don't realize the history of this whole event started back twelve years ago, eleven, twelve years ago, for, for the city. And I think one of the main things it has done is it, it's, the German Christmas market is, is made Oconomowoc a destination, as Bob has said. For residents, not just the area, but they come from the, all over the Midwest. I was looking online at some of their postings and people coming from northern Illinois, from, from, from far away to come to this market, because it is one of the better ones, because we have, I think we do a little bit different than what they do in a lot of places. And it just brought an enhancement to the city. And we're looking at other opportunities for the summer. Again, Bob, what we saw over there in the summer was a lot more outdoor activity, and I think we need something more in the mid to late summer, because it gets kind of the dog days of August, and we have to have something going on. So we're looking at that. And again, any questions, anybody has on the relationship or anything else regarding this? We have members of the community that, that went with us, that have been longstanding members of the delegation. We have a former city administrator here that's dying to answer some questions, I guess. Anybody have any questions? Lou?
I mentioned before, when, when this kind of came about, that I think the program is a, is a good program, is a valid program, but obviously there were a lot of concerns associated with it. Some, some of the concerns were the funding of the trip through room tax and how those are allocated. And then providing the community with takeaways from the trip, I think, is, is part of the other, I don't want to say concern, but concern that I was hearing from some of the constituents of, you know, and I'm sure you heard it, it was, it was just a vacation. Well, I know that you guys weren't there on vacation, that you guys were there gathering information, building relationships, and what the benefit of that brings to our community. But then what we provide back to the community as a takeaway, I think is really important. And that's more, more policy-oriented than, than value-oriented for what that trip brings along with the previous trips and hopefully upcoming trips. So I guess as a statement, I, I hope we continue it, but I hope we, we continue to look at it through a policy standpoint. Maybe it's not funded through room tax, maybe it's funded through general funds, or maybe if that's a, if that's a concern for how those dollars are supposed to be spent to, to make sure it's clean. And then whether it's a trip to Germany or a trip to California, whatever the purpose of that trip is, that there's some kind of report that comes back in a public format, whether it's here at council or published and made available. I think those two aspects, whether it's this trip or others, will help alleviate some of the, the concerns that I heard from constituents and keep things cleaner moving forward. But...
And that was the purpose of this report?
Yeah, yep, yep. So, and I appreciate that that was, that was listened to and heard and acted upon. And hopefully that, again, not just for this trip, but as a general policy, we can institute something like that. So the, the general public and our constituents know what to expect when any of those trips are taken, as well as this body.
Any other comments, questions? Matt?
I gotta be honest with you, I think the report was more about the German Christmas market than the trip to Dietzenbach. My concern was we budgeted for the trip after the fact. I don't think that's an appropriate way to budget. The report was great if it was about German Christmas market or about the history of forming that. You know that one of the biggest German Christmas markets in the world is actually in Chicago. You don't have to go all the way to Germany, you know, to see a German Christmas market. I don't think anybody on the council and the community will deny that that's a very successful program. The German Christmas market is great. I think the questions we had, and what I didn't hear tonight, was why we paid money for folks to go to Germany in two thousand and seventeen, and what we really got out of that. I got that there's educational programs, I got that there's high school exchange groups going, but what did we as the city, and what does we as taxpayers, who spent six thousand dollars to send people there, get out of this trip? I didn't see anything in this report that's functionally, what, what did we substantively get? We may have some other food and wine things, some, at some point, we've had those kind of programs before. So, look, I, I'm not in favor of these trips. I think in the future, if we have them, I think they, there needs to be a defined goal. There needs to be a defined mission and vision for why we're doing that. If Dietzenbach wants to come here every year, more power to them. Maybe they got more tax money, maybe they don't have levy restrictions, you know? I, I don't know. But I'm still not in favor of the trip. I don't think the report provided what we, what we, what I was looking to hear, so.
I don't think so. Probably shouldn't, shouldn't know. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on. Reports and, any other staff reports?
No, there's none.
Okay. Reports and comments from the mayor. I have a couple of things tonight. Oh, yeah, Alderman first. Reports and comments from Alderman.
I just have a, one quick thing that I'd like to relate. I had two goals after this operation that I had, was one, to make it to Naval, to Veterans' Day, which is a Saturday, by the way. And we will be having a little ceremony down at Veterans Park. They're gonna prop me up, and they're gonna make me talk and do a few things at eleven o'clock, it'll be there. The whole regiment there, and there'll be an open house at the VFW for some German beer and some chili. And my second goal was to be able to go down and, and have one of the first pints poured out of that keg on German fest. So I'm getting close, so.
Any other comments? Jeff?
I was also gonna comment on Veterans Day coming up and making sure we thank our veterans. But the other thing I wanted to comment on, we had a couple of reports tonight and some additional information that was provided by staff. I thought they did an excellent job, and I want to thank everybody who put those reports together and gave us a lot of good information tonight.
Eric?
I'd like to thank folks for putting the reports together, but I would also, my, my main comment is that I'd like to see people other than have charter cable be able to see these meetings online. I'd like to push forward for having something that's not a tape, a cassette tape recording us. Let's move into the, into the two thousand and seventeen, get some, some digital stuff.
Maybe a CD at least.
And, let's put it online so people can view this, so everybody can view it, not just people with charter. I don't know what the percentage of people that have charter are, but it was out too recently, right?
It's been out, and that's an issue, and we're looking into it.
Right, so let's, let's move on that. I've been asking for this since I was elected Alderman, and it hasn't happened yet, so.
I have a couple of things. I have a proclamation and a couple of other reports. This proclamation, I was asked by the church out in Mapleton, which I was a member of for a long time. And they asked me, it's the one-hundred-and-seventieth anniversary, so they asked, it's not in the city, but they have a, a large city population of, of members, so here we go with this proclamation. Whereas St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Church is celebrating a hundred and seventy years at its current location in Mapleton, having been established in eighteen forty-seven by Father Thomas Morrissey. And whereas this church bears the name of the family, Catherine and Alexander Coyle, who donated the land the church sits on. And whereas ten years after the inaugural mass, the cornerstone was laid on June sixth, eighteen eighty-six, and the first church building was erected on the same plat of land that the church currently stands on today. And whereas the existing bell in the church bell tower was installed in October of eighteen ninety-nine, the original building and ceiling paintings are currently in the gathering area, and the old sanctuary is the current chapel. And whereas the first eight pastors of St. Catherine's came from Ireland, each fiercely dedicated to the faith and making sure the people held to it. And whereas two mission churches were established and have been connected with St. Catherine of Alexandria Church, one, St. Jerome's Catholic Church in Oconomowoc in the eighteen sixties, and St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church in Okachi now in the Shota in nineteen thirty-three. And whereas St. Catherine Alexandria Church is a Roman Catholic community that strives to live in the light and is committed to showing unconditional love to all of who are seeking a place to belong. Now therefore, I, David Knoll, mayor of the city of Oconomowoc, on behalf of all who have had an opportunity to attend or be served by St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Church, do hereby formally and personally proclaim congratulations on her one-hundred-and-seventieth anniversary. Furthermore, I, David Knoll, do hereby recognize St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Church's contribution and contributions by its members to this community. A couple of other things. We all know the Christmas parade is coming up on June second. We are adding a tree lighting ceremony.
December, May.
Oh, yeah, December. I don't know why I said that. Parade, and, and we, we're adding a tree lighting ceremony this year, so the tree lighting will be down at the, by the roundabout. Haven't worked out all the details yet, but it'll be starting around four, with the lighting around five, and then the parade will come through. The following night, we have the, the train will come through town, will stop. That will be here at six fifty-five on a Sunday night. We're expecting a lot of people. They're telling us anywhere between four and eight thousand people will be in town. So that's quite an event. If you haven't seen it before, the train is, is pretty spectacular. And one other thing that's more business-related, the chief, Sarah and I will be going up to Hartford next week to visit their police department and get a look at what type, because they just rebuilt it, when was it built? Two thousand and eight. So it's more of a state-of-the-art system. We want to see what they have. They're a very similar-sized community, and we want to look and see how they're set up, because I did do a tour of our police department recently, and it's pretty horrendous, so. That will be next week, and I'll report back on that after we get done with, with the view, so.
When is that? What, what, can you, can you say that? When is that?
I'm going on next Wednesday.
You're going to the mineshaft?
Not that I know of.
Oh, I bet you, I'll go.
Okay, next item. We are going in the closed session for Wisconsin stats, nineteen point eight-five per N one, per N E. Deliberately negotiating, negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. We have three items: sale of public right-of-way, park client acquisition, and sale of city-owned property Silver Lake Street. So we need a motion to go in the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Miller? Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, we're drawn out of, out of open session.